Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order at 6:30, 34 PM. My name is Jason Hart, I'm the Vice Chair serving in Mr. Carr's absence. Can we get a roll call please?
Mr. Vig.
Here.
Mr. Carrs. Mr. Ron.
Here.
Ms. Eiker. Mr. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Dole.
Here.
Ms. McKay.
Here.
Thank you.
Please let the record show that Mr. Carrs and Ms. Eiker are excused. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of, or, of April 10th, 2014?
Motion.
Okay, so Ms. McKay has moved, Mr. Ron has seconded. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If not, then the minutes of April 10 will be approved. Are there, next item of business disclosures, are there any disclosures for any cases today? Mr. Vig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was not in attendance at the April 10th meeting and so on the consent agenda coming up. And I have not reviewed the transcript of the case, but I will refrain from voting on that particular resolution. This is case number, it's Resolution 2014-006.
Any other disclosures? So personally, I have a disclosure as it relates to case 2014-0058. I personally serve on the Alaska State Commission for Human Rights and that is the commission for the state that enforces the human rights law which includes the Fair Housing Act and accommodations for individuals with disabilities. I don't have any financial personal interest in the case and I don't see any reason why I can't be impartial as it relates to the case. So if there isn't any objection, well, I guess, is there, is there any discussion or objection to my participation in that case? Mr. Vig.
Is the proper order to move, pass a motion directing you to participate? I believe it is.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Ron has moved to direct the member to participate, Ms. McKay has seconded. Is there any objection to that motion passing? No objection, so I'll take it that I am directed to participate in that case. For clarification, a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding Resolution 2014-006, which there would not be a quorum for. And will be postponed until the next meeting. So Mr. Ron has moved, Ms. Dole has seconded. Is there any, is there any objection? Okay, the consent agenda is approved? Okay, the next item on the agenda is public hearings. Okay, and we have a short board tonight and I will be reading the policy regarding postponement of public hearing applications. When there is a short five-member board or commission and a postponement is offered to and agreed to by the petitioner, they will be moved to the next regular agenda. This should occur within 30 days, which does not require re-noticing the case. New public hearing notices, advertising. If the petitioner is willing to postpone but unable to attend the next available meeting date within 30 days, the petitioner has a one-time only option to choose the next date certain he, she can attend at no extra fee. When a postponement is requested by the petitioner, there is a rescheduling fee and a new public hearing date shall be determined by the planning division. This will put their case in the next available cutoff date queue as if they were submitting their case for the first time. Are there any petitioners here today that would like to opt out? Please come to the mic, state your first and last name and spell it, please. Okay, thank you, Mr. Higgins. Is there a motion by the board to postpone case 2014-067? Moved by Mr. Vig, seconded by Ms. Dole. If there's no objections, then that case will be postponed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The board shall hear a brief staff presentation outlining the appeal. The appellant shall give his or her presentation. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the appellant who must convince the board by preponderance of the evidence that the appeal should be granted. On conclusion of the appellant's presentation, the board members and staff may then direct questions to the appellant through the chair. The staff shall then give its presentation. On conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and the appellant may then direct questions to the staff through the chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board, staff, or the appellant. On conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the appellant, shall have the right of rebuttal presentation. The board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the appeal and disposition of the appeal. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the board at a later meeting. The next item on the agenda is case number 2014-0058, the petitioner is Valley Waldrop. Will the staff please report on the sufficiency of notice?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Jill Anne Inglis and I'm presenting the case for 2014-058. The Community Development Department provided proper notice for this appeal by mailing public notices to 53 property owners of parcels located within 800 feet of the property on May 22nd, 2014. The Abbott Loop Community Council was notified. In addition, notice was published in the municipal website on May 22nd, 2014. As of writing this case, six comments were received in favor of granting the appeal. However, we would like to note that we believe there's a de minimis error on the public notice. If you refer to page 77 and 78 of your packet, or 77 and 79, I'm sorry, of your packet, you will note that the public hearing notice on the municipal website indicates the total area is .36 acres and that the public notice mailed out to the members of the public indicates it's .65 acres. The department believes that this is a de minimis error and that the, that it is not germane to the overall appeal in regard to the assisted living facility. Therefore, we suggest that the board, that we believe we have sufficient notice.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice? Seeing none, we'll move on. Mr. Chair, if I can ask the staff for a point of clarification regarding the sufficiency of notice? My apologies, Mr. Ron. Go ahead. Thank you, through the chair, Ms. Inglis, 800 feet, can you speak to that? Is that the requirement per code? Or what was the reasoning behind the selection for 800 feet?
The requirement, if you just give me a moment, I'd like to look it up real quick so I can tell you. I'm going to let Ms. McConnell answer.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Erica McConnell, I'm the manager of the current planning section. The requirement is, in code, is either a notice of 500 feet or the nearest 50 properties. Because a 500-foot radius did not capture 50 properties, the radius was extended out until there were at least 50 properties notified.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. Once again, any objections to the sufficiency of notice? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. If, can you please raise your hand if you're planning on testifying in this case tonight? Okay. Can those individuals who raise their hand please stand up? As well as the staff? Okay, we have to administer an oath, so please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give is the truth? We need an affirmative answer.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so now we ask the staff to give their presentation. Okay, will the staff please give their presentation? You have 10 minutes. A brief presentation.
Mr. Chair, the staff is going to provide a brief presentation to outline the appeal and then we will give a full presentation after the appellant has given their presentation according to 2112-440. The property is, is that, is that okay, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, can you repeat yourself?
I'm going to give a brief presentation just to give you an overall view of the property information and then I will provide a full, a full presentation after the appellant gives their presentation.
Yes, my apologies, that's what I meant.
Okay. The property is owned R1A with special limitations. It was owned under Anchorage ordinance 8954. Well, first of all, I think I need to provide, I provided the staff a table, I mean, the board members a table of contents and for the public's information, the packets have arrived and they're out in the foyer and you can pick up a packet. Also, I placed the table of contents and a picture of the assisted living facilities up front here if you'd like a copy. The staff report is on page one, definitions are on page two, the maps are on page 13. A special note is the map of the assisted living facilities and as-built survey is on page 16, the floor plan of the facilities on page 17, and the location, an overhead location of the property is located on 18 through 20, pages 18 through 20. The appellant's notice of appeal, their original appeal, can be found on page 22. The petitioner's response to the appeal, that means when I reference appellant and petitioner, I'm referencing the petitioner as the owner of the parcel and the operator of the assisted living facility. The appellant is Ms. Waldrop. The appellant's response to the original petitioner's response, the appellant's traffic counts can be found on page 58, review agency comments and community comments are found on page 61. The notice that we've already gone over is on 77 and the initial application that was found under case 2014-018 is on 97, along with the staff packet for 2014-018 is found on 105. The community comments is found on 103 for the, for the case 2014-018 and the notice for the case 2014-018 is found on page 197. The Abbott Loop Community Council Resolution is found on page 204 and the building permit information is found on page 207. The property is owned R1A, single-family district with special limitations. It was owned under Anchorage ordinance 8954 on October 10th, 1989. The property was platted in its current configuration under plat 9971 filed at the District Recorder's Office on July 8th, 1999. This is a case in regard to an appeal of the department allowing for the petitioner to increase the occupancy levels of a small residential care facility from five to eight persons as permitted under 2115-013 and 2140-030B6. The house is 5,198 square feet, according to the tax records. It has an attached garage at 736 feet. It was constructed in 2001 under building permit 01293. It was issued a certificate of occupancy October 7th, 2002. On December 20th, 2013, the owner applied, the petitioner applied for a building permit to convert the home from, to an eight-person small residential care facility. The structural permit was issued on January 13th, 2014. During the permitting process, the petitioner realized that he had to come, come to the department for a reasonable accommodation and therefore, at that time, so that he could go forward with the construction project, he decreased the number of occupants to five while he awaited the planning department's response to his request for reasonable accommodation. The project was completed and the certificate of occupancy was issued on May 19th. In the meantime, the petitioner applied for the reasonable accommodation on December 26th, 2013. I'd like to outline that we reviewed this case under the old code as permitted pursuant to the agreement that the Assembly made in regard to approving the new code that became effective January 1st, 2014. Property owners were noticed within 800 feet of the property on January 2nd, 2014. The resolution, as I noted, from the community council, the community council met and there's the resolution on page 204 indicates that 79 members at that meeting were opposed to allowing the reasonable accommodation and one member was in favor. In addition, 34 comments were received from the neighbors against allowing the assisted living facility to increase the occupancy and three comments were received in favor of granting the variance. After determining the request was met and the criteria for a reasonable accommodation, the department approved an eight-person assisted living facility on February 21st, 2014. The approval is subject to the conditions noted on page, on page two. Ms. Waldrop representing the community filed a timely appeal of the administrative decision on March 13th, 2014. The appeal submitted makes five specific allegations of error related to the residential character of the neighborhood, needs associated with the eight-person residential care facility, financial viability and economic hardship. Appeals are processed in accordance to 2131-10 through 2131-7. Except for, appeal may be brought by any person withstanding to request reasonable accommodation under Fair Housing Act. The standards of AMC 2115-013 apply. That's the end of my brief presentation.
Okay, just to put on the record for tonight, staff presentation will be allotted 10 minutes, the appellant will be allotted 10 minutes and then testimony from representatives will be allowed five minutes and individuals will be three. When you come to the mic, please state your name, spell it and announce if you are representative
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Ron.
Thank you. Quick question for staff, if I may.
Yes.
Through the chair, Ms. Inglis, you mentioned standing. This may be a silly question, but I didn't notice in the packet any record that the appellant has standing in this case. Can you confirm for the record that in fact, the appellant does have the standing about
Mr. Chair, under 21, through the chair, under 2131-10, an initiation of an appeal can be brought to before the zoning board of examiners, appeal may be brought by any person adversely affected by the action. Ms. Waldrop is a community member in close proximity to the assisted living facility. She has not, to my knowledge, indicated she has standing as outlined in regard to the Fair Housing Act and the standards of 2115-013. But she, she does have standing in regard to being a community member.
Thank you. So anyway, so your question? Okay. Will the appellant please step to the mic and state their name and spell it for the record? And you will have 10 minutes for your presentation.
My name is Valerie, V.A.L.E.R.I.E., Waldrop, W.A.L.D.R.O.P.
Just so you're aware, if you would like rebuttal, you have to, you have to reserve some time from your 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you. May I begin?
Yes, please.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Valerie Waldrop. I live on Cormorant Cove Circle in the Sahale neighborhood. I have an exhibit here of our neighborhood, a bird's eye view. This neighborhood, this map that's on the right, your right, is not in your packet, the other one is. And the home in question, the ALF, is circled with red on that map. While my name stands alone on the appeal, I do represent many, many of my neighbors. I'd like to thank each family here for joining me tonight and demonstrating how much we all care about our lovely and unique neighborhood. And thank you to the board for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. I am here to ask the zoning board of examiners and appeals to reverse the occupancy variance awarded by the municipal planning department to Mr. Jack Demoss and his assisted living facility at 8431 Cormorant Cove Circle. My family moved to Sahale three years ago. We spent years dreaming of our move, waiting for our pocketbooks to align with the market and for the right home to become available. Sahale is the jewel of Anchorage neighborhoods. You can see on the map that our homes are adjacent to wild lands and trail access. Yet Sahale is also adjacent to schools and playgrounds. Our previous home was just a couple miles away on a beautiful lot, but the passing traffic made it unsafe for my young boys to learn to bike or for us to go for a family walk. Now we live on a street where 12 of the 18 homes have children. There is only one way into and out of Sahale. We don't have any passing traffic. Our street is filled with kids playing scooter races, basketball, cul-de-sac parties, tag, hide-and-seek, families walking, strollers and neighbors. It's how these kids ought to grow up, feeling safe outside their homes. Before I continue, I feel compelled to refocus the conversation after the recent media this case received. I am not here to debate the value of assisted living facilities. My neighbors and I welcome all residents, of course, including the elderly. We are a very friendly community. I am here to try and prevent the expansion of the ALF from five to eight residents, an expansion of 60 percent, a 60 percent increase in commercial impact to our quiet dead-end cul-de-sac. Our neighborhood is zoned to accommodate up to a 5% ALF and in fact, we do have a small ALF on Sahale Drive. I must assume that the makers of the municipal code determine that an ALF of up to five residents is the maximum size to fit seamlessly into a single-family residential district like Sahale, striking the balance between accommodating a community need but preserving and protecting the residential character of the neighborhood. There are 410 ALFs in Anchorage. 95 percent of these have five residents or fewer. Clearly, the small size works. In addition, the municipal code offers an important opportunity for an assisted living provider to request an occupancy variance. Strict standards must be met for its approval and the codes clearly state that the applicant must provide evidence. Here, the planning department failed. Neither Mr. Demoss or the municipality presented evidence that the variance would indeed Neither Mr. Demoss or the municipality presented evidence that the variance would indeed protect the residential character of the area. In other words, the facility does not meet the required standards to be granted a variance. Because the variance does not meet the code requirements, it should not be granted. Municipal Code 2115-13E lists nine standards that the planning department must use to evaluate the applicant's request. The nine standards are detailed in your packet. Board members, as a citizen of Anchorage, I value the order and predictability provided by the municipal code. The code reflects what the municipality and its residents have determined to be the fair and equitable means of addressing municipal matters. When a person or the municipality itself fails to follow the code, order and predictability are lost, and subsequently, the underlying principles of fairness and equity. The planning department's decision to provide the occupancy variance failed to adhere to municipal code, and in doing so, it has stripped the residents of Cormorant Cove Circle and Sahale of the protections offered to all other municipal residents. The packet you received details all the errors. In the time I have left, I would like to highlight a few. Addressing the safety of area residents, our families was completely absent from the application. Considerations that were not made in the evaluation were the number of children walking to the adjacent elementary and high school, children from Sahale as well as the Jupiter neighborhood next door. While Sahale does provide a sidewalk along one side of the street, we all know that children are hardly contained so neatly, and that in addition, it is common to walk or bike in the street. The winter forces this pattern even more if sidewalks aren't cleared in a timely manner. The staff report indicated that overflow parking would easily fit around the grass circular in the middle of the cul-de-sac. While this might look okay on paper, please visit us in February when the grass center is a giant mountain of snow, an epic play center for King of the Hill. Despite gallant efforts of the Muni snow plowing department, often we are lucky to have a single lane available around the cul-de-sac. More often than not, our street's plowing is delayed for days after a snowstorm, making driving impossible without four-wheel drive. Also, in regards to safety, with a 60 percent increase in the ALF size, we are looking at a 60 percent increase in visitors to our neighborhood. We understand that the ALF residents, the elderly, are and would be residents of our community. Everyone else involved with the ALF is an employee or a business owner. We will be inundated with attending employees, transportation for residents, medical and nursing personnel, inspectors, ambulances, deliveries, visitors, prospective residents and families, cleaning services, physical therapists, massage therapists, laundry services, and maintenance personnel. These are people that don't live in Sahale. They work in Sahale. They have no investment or experience with our neighborhood. They care about Cormorant Cove Circle the way you might care about your office parking lot. But this is not an office parking lot. This is our home. Will that driver know that Nora is learning to ride her bike and might escape her mom's watchfly? Will they know to watch out for Cedar the dog who escapes from his backyard and zips across the road? Will they expect my son Milo to try and beat his time running around the perimeter of the cul-de-sac and not watching the driveways as he should? In regards to traffic in general, Mr. Demoss's application suggests that his eight residents would live a quiet life, that all staff would park in the driveway and garage, and that the residents would leave the home rarely and rarely have services come to them. The planning department accepts this scenario. I do not. My father is 83, and when I visit him, my chauffeur's schedule is full: podiatrist, haircut, vitamin B12 shot, physical therapist, massage therapist, to name just a few trips. Providing these services to the Cormorant Cove ALF residents, whether onsite or off, is amplified due to the nature of a dead-end cul-de-sac. Sahale has one road in and out. Every visitor to the ALF will drive past almost the entire neighborhood, and then, when leaving, will repeat this route. Somebody picking up a resident and taking them to an appointment would result in four drives through the neighborhood for one appointment for one resident. Mr. Demoss owns another ALF, the Wesleyan House, a 10-resident facility located in a mixed residential office district. While he could have provided substantive data regarding traffic and parking on his proposed eight-person ALF on Cormorant, he did not. My neighbors and I decided to collect our own data, and we watched the Wesleyan House for a 16-hour period. Our findings show that his conservative traffic estimates for Cormorant were half of what we observed at Wesleyan. Significantly, we also counted 1,000 cars driving by the home during that time period. Clearly, the mixed residential office district is completely different than our single-family residential district, and we hope to keep it this way. Before closing, I must address standard number five. Mr. Demoss claims that he must have eight residents to be financially viable. In your packet, you could piece together this timeline. Let me capture it for you by saying that Mr. Demoss purchased an expensive home. He financed it 100 percent. He conducted an extensive remodel to house eight residents before the variance was approved. Any financial hardship that he experiences is the result of his own business decisions. I ask that you don't change our neighborhood because of a businessman's risky investment. Do I have to stop? Most homeowners in our neighborhood...
Ma'am?
Yes?
It's up to the Board. Would the Board like her to finish? Is there any objection to her finishing?
Just as long as it's short. Just as long as it's short and it's not...
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we request that the appellant wrap things up, and we'll have an opportunity to ask questions to ferret out additional information if need be.
Okay. Please, shortly, ma'am.
Most homeowners in our neighborhood oppose the variance. One of my neighbors, Dean Cars, is also your fellow Board member. He provided public comments to the municipality on February 17th that state, "I do not support the granting of this variance. The increase in occupancy and the associated traffic is not appropriate to our residential neighborhood." Thank you again for the opportunity to both appeal the decision and to present in person. If this Board overturns the variance, you will provide the Sahale homeowners with the opportunity to integrate a small assisted living facility and its five residents into our lovely neighborhood while preserving the residential character that makes our neighborhood so special. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Board have any questions to the appellant?
Through the chair, I'd like to ask a question. Ms. Waldrop, do you know of anything in the code that prohibits eight adults living in that home? Eight college students, eight adults, eight roommates?
I'm not an expert on the Muni code, but I don't believe there is any restriction.
Thank you.
Mr. Vick?
Thank you. Ms. Waldrop, you mentioned that you and/or some of the other neighbors visited the other ALF and did traffic counts, and that was for a somewhat larger facility. Did you factor them down in relation to size differential between the two? Or did you account for the difference in size between the two?
The Wesleyan facility is marketed as a seven-to-10 person, and I don't know the current occupancy, so we did relate it to the eight-person proposed at Cormorant.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Raan.
Thank you through the chair, Ms. Waldrop. Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate you coming down and being diligent about your efforts. A question about the traffic impact analysis, or TIA, that Mr. Vick asked about as well. Is the conjecture that with a 60 percent increase in occupancy that there will also be a 60 percent increase in traffic? What's your position there? I'm just trying to draw a line between qualitative information you provided and some of the quantitative information.
Yes. First, I would say that the burden of proof of the traffic impact ought to be on Mr. Demoss. Because he didn't provide that, we did our own research, and so, we're not research scientists, but an increase from five residents to eight is 60 percent. And so, if you just look at individual services that might come in or be off-site, then you will see that increase. I can't say across the board for his entire business if it's that direct, but certainly around traffic and services.
Thank you through the chair again. Ms. Waldrop, in the staff packet, I see mention of permanent in relation to negative impact. Can you talk about duration? When I hear a word like "permanent," that to me has a very clear definition in time. In your presentation, you talked about effects upon the neighborhood but not in association with duration. So can you please put that in a temporal context for me?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question. The permanence of what?
The impact.
Would Sahale experience a permanent impact? I don't have any reason to believe that if the ALF operates as a five-person or an eight-person, that there's an ending time of that. I don't have knowledge of other ALFs in town to know their duration. So, my neighbors and I, as we discuss it, see this as long-term, which is why we've worked so hard to prepare and present to you, because our children are young, and we see this as a permanent change in our cul-de-sac and in our neighborhood. So, our hope is by appealing and making this effort that we can integrate the ALF as we're zoned, as a five-person ALF.
Thank you, ma'am. Will the staff present their portion, please?
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, I'm going to briefly outline or go over the standards. There are nine standards. In addition, I'm going to address AMC 2115-013A through D, and then go over the nine standards indicated under E. In regard to the intent, the property is permitted to have a five-person assisted living facility in the R1A and can have a reasonable accommodation up to eight if the Department The State of Alaska, the applicant applied for the applicable building permits to allow the assisted living, and all inspections have been completed. The State of Alaska Department of Health and Social Services has issued a provisional license to the operator, and it's for adults age 18 and older who have physical disabilities or elderly who suffer from dementia but who are not chronically mentally ill. I passed out the colored version, and you'll see that in one of the appellant's exhibits up there, but I passed out the colored version of all of the assisted living facilities in Anchorage and Eagle River listed as of February 2014 on the State of Alaska website. This one is what would be, this type of facility would be the red dots on the map. The applicant, we believe that standard has been met. The applicant is, in regard to B, the applicant is not requesting a dimensional setback, accommodation, or variance. The building is located in a conforming location. In regard to number C, the applicant, or the petitioner, makes reference, in the original appeal, the appellant made reference that we did not follow the notice procedures. We did follow the notice procedures. We provided notice to 53 parcels within 800 feet of the property on January 2nd. Forty-five letters after duplicates were mailed. In addition, the Abbott Loop Community Council was notified under the original case. The electronic notice was noticed on the website December 31st. We believe that standard of notice has been met. The time approval was also mentioned under D by the appellant, and it makes reference that the Department erred in regard for the time approval. We believe we followed the timing required under the code. The application was submitted December 26, and we provided a decision February 21st, and the Director rendered the decision within 60 days. In regard to E1, standard number one, the structure has the appearance of a residential home. It was built as a residential home. Its interior has been modified to accommodate members with disability, elderly persons with disability. In addition, the required parking for the facility is the same as for a single-family residence of that size, which requires three. We note that there are more parking spaces provided at the location than what is required under the code. The Department did not require any additional parking spaces. We believe standard number two is met. The assisted living operator proposes to operate 24 hours per day. There are three shifts, two staff and an administrator in the day shift. In the afternoon, there will be two staff, and in the evening, there will be one night shift staff. According to the Anchorage Daily News article published on April 12, 2014, the cost of a home aid provider can be anywhere from $26 to $81. So, based on the average of a $633.12 per day cost for a person waiting to move into an assisted living facility should they hire a home health aide. Therefore, there is an expense, if the assisted living facility is less expensive, and there is an expense to a person waiting to move into an assisted living facility. In response to number three, we believe that standard has been met. There is a sprinkler or fire alarm system in the facility. It also abuts a wetland, so safety concerns in regard to wildlife has been addressed by the home's policy. We believe standard number four has been met. Based on my personal count of the website, there are 409 licensed assisted living facilities within the municipality of Anchorage. They range from a large assisted living facility all the way down to a three-person or a four-person assisted living facility. There are 181 assisted living facilities that are equivalent to what Mr. Demoss has, the petitioner has. The ADN article referenced that the senior housing availability is increasing, the senior housing requirements for assisted living is increasing, and there's more need for nursing beds in the future. In addition, I'd like you to take a look at AMC 2185-080, which is the, 2185-050, which is the criteria for subdivision for interior streets. The average daily trip counts per dwelling unit in a single-family residential district is 8.2. That's what the traffic department used under the old code to determine the trip counts for a residential home. We believe standard number five has been met. Based on the profit and loss statement, the petitioner provided five persons will result in an income shortfall. We believe that number six has been met. The subdivision was constructed with sidewalks, street lighting, and availability for on-street parking. It is a residential home. Traffic volumes are not expected to be greater than what is anticipated in a residential neighborhood. The traffic is being mitigated by the facility policies regarding vegetation times, staff parking locations, once-a-week grocery deliveries, and off-site medication restock that's brought in to the site by regular staff. Health and safety, standard number seven, we believe that's been met. The house is constructed as a subdivision developed after 1999, and I mentioned again the streetlights... And I mentioned again, the street lights and the need for assisted living for the elderly individuals that may have dementia and need for assistance in daily living. The staff that's located on the site can provide, can address safety issues. The place is staffed 24 hours a day. So, they can address safety issues in regard to any of their visitors or their staff. Administrative and economic burden, standard number eight. We believe this criteria was not addressed in the appeal. There's no indication that there will be administrative or economic burden to the municipality if this variance is approved or denied. We provided, as part of standard number nine, we provided, we didn't deem additional factors, were not deemed to be relevant in this application and we provided conditions of approval on page two of the report in the initial packet. Therefore, we believe that all standards have been met and we request that the zoning board affirm, in whole, the decision of the director. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Vig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Inglis, on, in the staff's analysis that would have supported granting the variance for the increase in size, you would have evaluated the economic hardship on the intended occupants in accordance with standard number two in making that determination? The reason I ask is that the finding was, the decision date was February 21st, but the Daily News article was April 12th. So, I'm wondering, was there, is there staff analysis that was done leading up to the February 21st decision that we haven't seen?
Through the chair, are you referring to standard number two?
Yes.
At that point, we just evaluated that it would increase the available opportunities for senior citizen housing with disabilities in the original, in the original application, or staff report on page 108.
So, it is not necessary to demonstrate economic hardship if the variance is denied?
Well, during the original review, we looked at the shortage of housing. There's a general shortage of housing within the municipality of Anchorage overall. Therefore, there's a shortage of housing. So, we thought that there was a shortage of housing for the disabled individuals, which results in an economic burden to the individuals that are trying to find housing.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ron.
Thank you through the chair. Ms. Inglis, in staff's response to standard one, there's a statement, therefore, the site provides eight parking spaces if needed. In looking through department comments, see an assertion from Traffic Engineering on April 1st discussing ADA accessibility within the parking area. Can you speak to that comment from Traffic Engineering at all and how it may bear on the off-street parking that was documented?
Through the chair. At the original evaluation of the case, 2014-018, the traffic department did not make a comment in regard to an accessible spot. They do have a ramp within the garage or the ability to help, help their residents get into the house in the garage. After we submitted the appeal, the traffic department made this comment and since this was an appeal, we did not think we could add additional conditions to the, to the petitioner. However, if the board chooses to add a condition, that would be your decision.
For board member reference in those, in the audience, the comments I'm referencing are on page 66 of the staff packet from Traffic Engineering.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jumping back to the financial situation analyzed in this case and appeal, can you talk me through again a little bit regarding the department's evaluation of the profit and loss statement? I know you had referenced an ADN article and a few other sources, but if you could just speak to department's evaluation of that financial information, I'd appreciate it.
On page 34 is the profit and loss statement. We, you know, we'd have to take it on face value, what's submitted by the petitioner. So, the petitioner for a five-bedroom assisted living indicates that the net income would be a negative $70,000. So, that's, that's how we evaluated it. We have to take their word on the matter in regard to what they're charging and what they're not charging and what their costs are in relation to their business.
Thank you.
I guess I also have a question related to that profit and loss. Have we done the calculation to ensure that, that if there are three additional occupants added, that this becomes, no longer is a financial hardship?
No, I did not do that calculation through the chair.
Ms. Dol.
I saw a couple of references indicating that if the assisted living facility is not allowed to have eight people, that they will have, that their proposal is to have additional folks living on-site, kind of caretakers? I guess, I'm not sure I quite understood that. And I guess if, my question for you is if this, if eight, you know, if this, the result of this is that, you know, the assisted living facility is limited to five people, can there be additional people living or workers who are there, staying there, you know, basically living there as well, under the code?
Through the chair. In my presentation, I was indicating that the assisted living facility will have staff members. They, they will be awake, to our knowledge, based on the information submitted. However, if they choose to allow other people to live at their home besides the assisted living people, let's say you have a family operating the assisted living, there's, there's nothing that prohibits additional people living there that are not part of the assisted living facility. You could have a family operating an assisted living home of eight persons and still have other people living at the home. It's, this is for an eight-person assisted living, so this means eight elderly individuals living at the facility.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Are there any questions from the appellant? And for the record, staff has a minute and 31 seconds for rebuttal. Yes, please, if you have questions, please approach the mic. And then, can you state your name once again?
Yeah, Valerie Waldrop. Through the chair to Ms. Inglis. Based on the profit-loss sheet, Mr. Demas quotes an average of 180 a day and that's how the numbers were determined. If you look at page 49 of your packet, there's an advertisement for his Wesleyan house. The average there is 215 a day for a single occupancy. So, you can see already that Cormorant Cove is, he's suggesting that's going to cost less than Wesleyan. And yet, I believe that he purchased a home in Sahali as a way to bring residents in that wanted a nicer place to live than a residence, residential office mixed neighborhood. So, my question is, did you look at the actual costs? Are you able to do that to question that 180 a day? That seems quite low for a bedroom at Cormorant Cove, based on his numbers.
Through the chair. No, we didn't, you know, we didn't compare the costs. We take him on face value that he's charging $180. If I'm reading this correct, there's, there's different prices even listed on this, on page 49, in regard to, to assisted living. But we did, we did not look at that. We, if he submits something that says he's charging $180, we have to believe him. We don't know if he's doing it, doing it 100 or more or less.
I believe the standards require evidence. Anything else? Thank you.
Okay. If there are no further questions from the appellant, I'll open it to public testimony. Is there anybody wishing to speak on this case? Please approach the mic, state your name and spell it for the record. And please also state if you're representing an organization.
Hello, my name's Dan Fawcett. Fawcett is spelled F-A-W-C-E-T-T. I'm not a representative. I live on Cormorant Cove. I do not represent anything else. May I begin?
Yes, please.
Thank you. My family, we built our house in 2000. So, we were, I think, the third house on Cormorant Cove Circle. So, we've been there from, pretty much from the beginning. I have two small children, an eight-year-old and a three-year-old and we love the neighborhood. So, fantastic neighborhood. It's a great place to raise kids. And I have basically two, two major concerns. The first one is safety. Obviously, the traffic, increasing the traffic within the neighborhood is a big concern for us. And my second concern is the increased visibility that we have within our neighborhood. With that increased traffic comes increased visibility, increased people that are not residents within the neighborhood, visiting the neighborhood. And my third is just the overall concern of the unknown, of what, what comes in and out of our neighborhood. The second major concern is preserving the residential character that we desire within that neighborhood. And, you know, from what I've been able to read and hear, there's been scenarios that have been put in place on how the assisted living facility is going to affect the neighborhood. And I struggle a little bit with the accuracy of the projections of how the assisted living facility affects the neighborhood. The first part of it is, we attended a meeting at Abbott Loop Elementary School when this first started, before the assisted living facility was in place. And during that time, there were projections on how much traffic, how much visitation there would be to the assisted living facility. And initially, that was projected at maybe three visits a day. That was a guess. And this is a hard thing to estimate. I completely agree with that. Later, that number was up to eight visits a day, up to eight visits a day. So, we did a little work, once the assisted living facility was in place, and tracked the traffic that we'd see over a certain period of time. And we can submit this, I'm not sure if it's part of your packet, but we observed traffic up to 18 different vehicles there on a given day. We monitored it for seven days straight and during that seven days, we saw that we had about six different times that we were above eight visits a day. In fact, last night, there were over 15 vehicles at that particular house. So, that's where I struggle with the scenario of the accuracy of what we're projecting. And increasing it to eight, the only thing I do know is that number is going to continue to rise and I have definite concerns about the safety of our neighborhood.
Thank you. And just for the record, can you, can you confirm that you were sworn in earlier while we?
Yes, I was sworn in.
Okay, thank you. Are there, Mr. Ron?
Thank you through the chair, Mr. Fawcett. Thank you for your testimony. You mentioned observations of traffic. For context, can you clarify for the board where exactly those observations took place? There was a question earlier about the size of a facility that was being observed. So, if you can provide some more salient information, I would appreciate it.
Certainly, and I'd like to maybe make a copy of this prior to leaving and give this to you. But essentially, what we did is we live right next door to the, to the assisted living facility. So, we observed traffic two ways. We observed it through just counting the cars that came in and out of the neighborhood and parking within the driveway. And then, the second way that we observed it is we have a security camera system. And we decided to project out and monitor the traffic in and out of the, the assisted living facility. And we took different projections and the highest total that we had was on, this was done on March, the highest total came in on March 4th. There were 18 vehicles on March 4th. The lowest total was on a Sunday, on April 20th, which was down at three. So, I completely concur that it is very hard to project what you're going to get, what kind of traffic that you're going to have. But with less than five individuals living, or five or less, I don't really know how many people live at the assisted living facility, we had as many as 18 and as low as three, in and out of there. And what I'm sure of is when we go up from five to eight, that that number is going- And what I'm sure of is when we go up from five to eight, that, that number is going to increase. And so would the, the higher end of that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Doyle?
So if I understood correctly, the certificate of occupancy was granted on May 19th, and I'm guessing before that, there would have been, you know, other efforts to ready the place for occupancy. I'm just wondering how much of your, what your traffic counts were from May 19th through the present, if you have any?
I do not have any at this time. My latest date of traffic count formally on this paper is April 27th. And, but as I mentioned last night, there were more than, there were 15 or more vehicles there last night.
Was, was that at the same time when you say last night?
No, during the day.
Oh, okay, so last night's all day?
That's correct, yes. Yeah.
And that refers to cars that parked there for some period of time, whether it was five minutes?
Those are vehicles that drove down the street and pulled into the driveway and then left. So that's the only vehicles that we're counting, not anything passing by specifically to the assisted living facility.
Okay, thank you.
A question from staff, Ms. Ingles.
Through the chair, were any other areas, any other assisted living facilities where traffic counts completed at those facilities?
Yes, the Wesleyan House, the, the traffic observations were done that Ms. Waltrip talked about. And we have numbers totaling on those. Be happy to share counts if you're interested in that.
I meant besides the Wesleyan, are there Karamot Cove?
The Wesleyan, I believe the Wesleyan is an eight-to-10 bed facility, is that correct?
It's a 10.
10, okay. So again, distinction between neighborhoods, very different, right? But the, the, when I look at my totals here, I have vehicles traveling in and around the neighborhood, so that's not going to help us much. But arrivals to that facility are at a maximum of four, and departures are a maximum of, no, I'm sorry. Let me, let me qualify this again. I apologize, it's been a while since I've looked at this. This is for a 24-hour period. And when I look at my table, the 24-hour period, the people that observed this, we, we did this in shifts of looking at the, the time period for, for 24 hours, I believe. And it was not a specific day. So it wasn't one day, so it doesn't help me in getting you a total in and out of that, out of that facility in one particular day. Over the, the time period, thank you, that, that, there's a traffic observation on your page 58, and that might help me follow along, I apologize. If you turn to page 58. So in that, it shows the observation time period in the blocks that were conducted. And what you'll see in the second-to-last column to the right is arrivals and departures at that particular time period that was observed at that house. So for that house, there was, there were 17 vehicles, if you were to sum them all up, that arrived and departed, or arrived at that 2683 house, and 15 vehicles that departed from that 2683. But again, that's not done on a single day, it's done on a 24-hour period. And without being a statistician, could maybe argue the means that it's normalized by showing that it's done on different days. There weren't, I, I want to make sure you understand, there weren't other observations done during those same time periods, and we picked the higher ones. We did it one time, people volunteered to go observe the house, and those time blocks were done only one time. There were no other observations. So it just happens to be, I can go on this day from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and this is what we witnessed. And oh, I can go on this day. And we put that together. But I want to make sure I'm clear that we didn't do it more than once, and we weren't taking the higher of the, of the, the different observations.
Ms. Ingles, did you have another question?
I did. Did you verify the number of residents at the Wesleyan House? In addition, did you check to see if their main office was there?
No, I have no input on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Vig?
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett. What you described as going out in shifts to count these vehicles, that's not what happened on the lower part of the chart on page 58, where you have vehicles during a specific day, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, the lower part is specific 24-hour period that has been observed and continues.
Mr. Ron?
Thank you through the chair, another traffic question. I'm curious, did you observe traffic trips to any other residents in your neighborhood? I'm curious as to what the delta from the mean would be. Thinking about my family, we have two drivers, and I'd say we make about 10 trips in and out of our private residence a day.
Okay.
So do you have any data to, again, put this in context for, for the neighborhood?
No, I do not.
Any other questions from the board or staff? Are there any questions from the appellant? No questions from the appellant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else wishing to testify to, to give public testimony? Please come to the mic and state your name and spell it for the record, and confirm that you were sworn in earlier?
My name is Jack DeMoss. I, I'm the owner of the facility. And yes, I was sworn in earlier.
Okay. Please proceed.
Yeah, I'd like to address some of the traffic issues. The assisted living home, I, I own both of those, by the way. The assisted living home on Westland Drive has 10 residents. It has our primary office there, so that when folks would ask about the Cormorant Cove, they would come there to see that, because the homes are very similar. They would come in and out of that area, and we have administrative people there that come in and out of there. There is also, it is a very, I guess queer is what I would say for it, driveway. There is a single drive for two homes there. So you can mistakenly think that cars are going into our facility when they are not, and they park in the front of it. It looks like they would be parked in our facility, and they're not. The only way to, to know what I'm talking about is actually go by and see it. But there is only one driveway into two homes there. And that could, that would make, and I did do a count on the Cormorant Cove. And we tried to do an early count, but like, we did a lot of moving. We just finished up this last week on moving in supplies, furniture, clients. When all that happens, it doesn't happen over a short period of time, like one or two or three days. It could happen over a week to move in a client, and, and what we might need for that client. Just to give you some background on myself, I have been nursing in Alaska since 1975. I've done assisted living for about the last, for about 20 years, primarily here in the Anchorage area. I would say that there is a great need for assisted living facilities of this size. There is a great shortage of assisted living facilities this size. If you look at this map, it kind of blends together, but I will tell you, there are only seven facilities like this in, in the entire city. Cormorant Cove being one of them, if it's, if it's approved. South of Tudor Road, east of Lake Otis. Think of that quadrant there. There are none of that size in that area. I would also say to you, having worked in assisted living and in the home and community-based services area for the last 20 years in, in Anchorage, there is a great need here. The need is, is not getting less, it is increasing more. There is a need for this size of facility because clients that we have now, used to be nursing home clients, they are not nursing homes. There are no more nursing homes being built in Anchorage. If you notice, there has not been a nursing home bed in many, many years. What you see happening at Providence is just a switch from another facility. And so what happened is, those higher need clients have moved to assisted living. Because of that, the acuity levels are much, much higher. Clients need and want that higher staffed-to-client ratio, which is what we would provide in this facility, and which is why I have a, a continuing waiting list. If it's approved, we will fill up within the next week or two and be done with it. So as far as economic hardship, there were some studies that I did submit prior to this. The MetLife studies are done every year in, in this state on the cost of assisted livings. Hardships, I own another company that does home and community-based services in-home, and we provide that around-the-clock service, but in-home instead of in assisted living, it's very, very expensive. The minimal cost of substantial care, meaning four hours a day, seven days a week to a client, is about equivalent to what it would cost for one month in an assisted living home. That four hours a day, seven days a week, is substantially more. And we have clients, I've had clients in the past and have, continue to have them that are on continuous care, 24-hour, around-the-clock, and that care can, I, I didn't, I don't know if I gave that to Jillanne, but it, that, that can be about somewhere in the range of $9,000 to $10,000 per month. So there's significant hardship for clients when they can't find a space.
Are there any questions from the board or staff? Ms., Ms. Ingles?
Through the chair, how big is the Wesleyan home?
Wesleyan is a 10-bed.
How, how, what's the square footage? Do you know the square footage of the home?
It's approximately the same size as the square footage of the one we have now. It's slightly larger, maybe 150 square feet, I think, or something like that, but approximate size.
How many staff do you have that just answer questions from the public in regard?
Including administrative?
Do you have regular staff, through the chair, do you have regular staff that just operates the business rather than assisting the clients?
Yes.
How many?
Total?
Yes, in, in that facility?
There, I, I believe there are eight total. Some of those are full-time, some of those are part-time.
That are basically a clerical-type staff? I'm looking for clerical-type.
I'm sorry, that are?
That are not?
Caregiving staff.
You have about eight caregiving staff?
Yes.
Do you have any clerical or accounting staff or anything?
We have a nurse administrator, and then I have an operations manager that has an, both have an office there.
Okay. Do you, do, through the chair, is there any staff other than the caregiver? Do you have an office for, for repeated staff? I mean, a caregiver, other than the caregivers?
No.
At the Wesleyan facility?
No.
I mean, at the Karamot Cove?
No.
Uh, when did you open, when did you actually first start accepting clients?
At, at Westland?
At the Karamot Cove.
Cormorant Cove, after our, it was, I'm going to say, the end of April, May, whenever we got all of our occupancy. Occupancy, there is, there's, well, there's Medicaid certification, there's licensing from the state, there's the occupancy from the muni, there was fire and safety. There are about eight or 10 different things we had to get prior to move in, but we had all those in place prior to move in.
So your first clients started coming in towards the end of April? Is that what you're saying?
I, I think that's correct.
And how many clients are currently there?
Five, five assisted living clients there now.
Have you done any traffic counts at the Karamot Cove?
Yes. And they weren't 24-hour counts, but, but we did, you, are you talking about for the facility itself?
Yes.
On any given day, the problem with us early on here is, we, when we're moving in, we've had our caregivers come in for orientation, we've had clients moving in, those kinds of things, furniture delivered, all kinds of stuff, all the bugs taken out of the house for maintenance-wise and safety issues and those kinds of things. So we, we've pretty much, and we just moved in the last of the, the furniture this past week, actually, an equipment that we're going to need. So I would tell you, from this point forward, other than move-ins, that increased traffic should, should slow down.
Through the chair, do you, do you know how often you may turn over a client? It's kind of iffy, but I, do you change, change over clients quite often?
Generally, I've had clients for 10 or 12 years, and then I've had clients for 10 or 12 days, and it's, it's hard, I, I don't know that, the average.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes.
Can you speak into your mic a little bit better?
Yeah.
Sorry?
Yes, if, if I?
It references to the top opening in 2011, so it, it looks like it's, it's pretty dated. And it has?
It did open in 2011, that's correct.
And it has a pricing structure on there?
Yes.
And is that current?
That is fairly current. And let me, that is a private pay, let me just address that. You have, there were three things addressed in that, that P and L that she, that she has in our ongoing statements. You have private pay clients, you have Medicaid clients, which, which are much less. And then you have a vacancy rate, of course. We would expect at Cormorant Cove, even though it's eight-bed, we would probably have somewhere between seven and seven and a half folks there on average. So there's a vacancy rate, just like in any other, any other type of business. And, and because of that, it would bring the average cost down to, I, I think we just did a projection on that recently, and, and it's probably closer to 185 now dollars per day. And that would fluctuate with how many Medicaid clients we have versus private pay.
Thank you.
Was that it? Okay.
Mr. Vig?
Thank you, through the chair, Mr. DeMoss. You mentioned that there's a shared driveway with an adjacent property. I'm looking at the ASBelt on page 16.
That's at Wesleyan House?
Oh, I thought you were referring to there was a shared driveway on Cormorant Cove.
No, that, that was at Wesleyan House.
Okay.
They were talking about the high counts there.
Okay.
And I was explaining some of that, so.
Okay, and then I'd like to ask about the profit and loss statement.
Sure.
Who owns, who owns the, the property? Is it Alaska Premium Care, is it a different entity?
Myself and my, my wife, and my, my son-in-law and my daughter.
And the reason I ask is I look at the leases and rents.
Yes.
And I'm trying to, trying to understand that number, it seems awfully high. And for, for, can you explain that, I guess?
Can you give me the exact number?
Well, it shows $102,000 for?
For leasing?
For leases and rents as an expense related to the operation of the home.
That's, I, I can tell you, for that size of a facility, that would be a, we ran that through AHFC in our initial stuff and through the bank, and that was acceptable for them, because, because, one, the cost is much higher upfront. We did about, I'm going to tell you, somewhere around $175,000 worth of not-startup costs, but in changes when we did, to, to put in health and safety and those sorts of things into the home. And so, no, that, that's, I have, our other one is similar to that, too. That's what we ran it off of, too, of what we knew from our other facility.
So $175,000 in upfront costs to get it converted and up in, how many? So $175,000 in upfront costs to get it converted and up in, how many, how many years do you, do you amortize that over?
Well, we're looking at 30 years for the house.
I guess it seems like, to me, that, that the leases and rents is, is an extremely high, related to the other expenses in your P and L, which, I'm trying to understand it, I, you know, it, it really is driving the bottom line that shows the, the loss of $70,000.
Wait, you're, you're talking about a million-dollar facility there? And that's, that's what, and we, we're going by square footage and those kinds of things. If you had a six, if you were looking, if I could, if I may, just round it off to 6,000 square feet there, if I have a, a Class B commercial building also that I own, that Class B would go anywhere from $1.50 to a dollar, to, to $2 a square foot. And if you equated that to, to that residence there, that would be, you're looking at those types of numbers, 8,000 to 10,000.
Okay, so there, just trying to understand it, but there are, there's a different entity that owns the property that's probably making, making a profit off the ownership interest in the property?
That, that entity is myself.
Okay.
It's, we own the building and, and we manage it both.
Okay.
It's the same, same principles.
All right. I think that's all my questions for now.
Mr. Ron.
Thank you, through the chair, Mr. Demoss. What would happen to the Cormorant Cove facility if the appeal were granted?
I've thought about that, are you talking about whether I would take it to court? That was a question I had recently, I haven't gone, gotten that far in my mind yet, is that what you're suggesting, or you're suggesting what we, I might do with the facility?
Well, one of the standards that we've, we've been discussing tonight has to do with financial hardship, and the argument is being made on both ends regarding the jump from five to eight, you've provided some financial information indicating a loss without that jump, so as a business owner, what, what would your future plans be for the facility?
We would probably, I would probably eliminate Medicaid clients completely, that class, I would have to take private pay only in that process. Which, which is a higher pay than, than the Medicaid clients. I would have, I mean, I'm, I'm not legally bound to take them, but I would be, that's what I would have to do.
Please, Mr. Ron.
Thank you, if I, if I may follow up with a completely different question. Standard number four talks about advancing housing opportunities for disabled individuals in a residential community without jeopardizing residential aspects. We've heard about traffic, we've heard other concerns from the community, can you speak to any potential measures that your entity has put in place?
Yes, I'm not sure whether it's in the packet, one of the first things I did was put out a, a policy sheet to the staff there on driving in the neighborhood, being aware of, of children in the neighborhood, the crosswalks, and those sorts of things, so that we didn't have any speeding, no California stops, that we were aware of children. In our orientation process, we pass out that one sheet, and I'm sorry if it's, is it, is it not in the, I think I submitted it, I don't know if it's there or not. I do address that to try to keep the neighborhood, the traffic issues down. We've also, to keep traffic issues down, instead of having certain deliveries done to that home, we will have the deliveries done of medications and, and certain medical equipment over to our other facility, and then we will transport them in the normal trips that would be taken in, in that given day to Cormorant Cove, to keep our traffic pattern down as much as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Demoss, on page 30 of the staff packet, I see Alaska Premium Care Cormorant Cove policy for outside AL neighborhood.
Do you have a question? I have a follow-up question to Mr. Ron's first question, related to the profit and loss.
Sure.
The budget, so, so if the appeal was granted and you had to stay at five occupants, you're stating that your business would, would not be shut down?
We would have to change our, the business plan that I described. And, and then, then we would have to see if that would work or not.
Okay, so, so if it remained at five, you're unsure if you would have to shut, shut your doors completely, if you changed?
No, we would have to go to private pay, totally.
And you would still remain open?
Yes.
So, so I, I assume with private pay, you would still be making a profit if you were willing to keep your doors open?
I would have to look at that, I, I'm not sure whether, it depends on what, what we could charge in individual rooms. What I take into account here is that two-thirds of my clients out there, and it could be as high, it could be higher than that, 65% to 75% of them are, are Medicaid clients.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Doe.
Thank you. Thank you. I just have a few questions as well. First of all, I wasn't quite sure I understood the leases and rent line once it was brought to my attention, who?
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry, is that better?
Yes.
Okay, I'm having a hard time understanding the leases and rent line, is that, are those leases and rents paid by Alaska Premium Care to the, the owner of the lot, which is?
ACG Holdings.
ACG Holdings?
Yes.
Of which you are one of the owners?
Yes.
Okay. And this application was submitted by you on behalf of Alaska Premium Care or ACG Holdings? Could you just clarify that for me?
The initial, the initial variance?
Mm-hmm.
Was under ACG Holdings.
Okay. And I guess my, my other question that goes to another topic we've been discussing, which is the traffic, is I saw it here that, that if residents want, residents need additional services or just want additional services that the operator does not provide, whether, I mean, they can have people come to the home to do it, just like, you know, I could hire someone to come to my house?
Sure.
And do something for me?
Sure.
But I was wondering if you had any estimate based on your experience as to what the, you know, what residents, you know, what numbers were involved, or what type, how many of visits were involved, basically?
The primary thing that you're going to see is, is post-hospitalization, you may see some professional services coming in, like physical therapy, those sorts of things, those are the primary things, they don't, we may have Dr. Kleckah come in, she's a podiatrist, for those folks who are diabetics, but the majority, I would tell you, are, is probably physical therapy and nursing services when they're needed, acute nursing services.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions from the board or staff? Mr. Ron.
Thank you, through the chair, Mr. Demoss, we've heard a lot about the concerns associated with the facility, can you speak briefly to, in your opinion, what value you think this facility could bring to a neighborhood, whether it be this neighborhood or any other in, in Anchorage?
Absolutely, I, I think there, there are a lot of studies that show folks who, especially seniors, generally, they tend to stay inside or on decks close to, close to home, but will look out windows, and if they can see children, for one thing, that's good for them, to see children in the neighborhood. Seniors in general, I've worked with them for many, many years, love to be in a normal neighborhood, not confined to an area where there are just seniors. As far as bringing value to the neighborhood, it is, it is my family who owns it, has lived here for the last, my wife's family's been here for five generations in Alaska, I've been here since the 1960s, I try to be, and if you ask the neighbors where we currently have our assisted living, I try to be a good neighbor, I try to keep up the facilities, we have inspections that, that require us to keep up the facilities and make them look nice, I think we would be a great neighbor in that, in that subdivision.
Any other questions from the board or staff? Are there any questions from the appellant? Please, please step to the mic. Please repeat your name for the record as well.
Valerie Waltrip, through the chair, Mr. Demoss, did you indeed take an oath prior to your testimony?
Yes.
Can you tell me how many clients are sleeping tonight at Cormorant Cove?
Can, can you please step to the side and let the?
There are five assisted-living clients there.
Thank you, and I, I'm sorry if this is out of your rules, but I did wanted to clarify Mr. Ron's question, where you asked Mr. Demoss about the value of an ALF, and I, I do want to remind the board that I am appealing the expansion and the variance and not questioning the value of an ALF in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any, any others that would like to provide testimony today? Please step to the mic and state your name and spell it for the record, and then confirm that you have already been sworn in.
My name is Mary, M-A-R-Y, Kretzmar, K-R-E-T-Z, as in zebra, S-C-H, like school, M-A-R. I did stand up and take the oath.
Okay, and this is individual testimony?
This is individual testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Should I begin?
Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to testify here. I'd like to speak specifically to the standards that are put forth in the muni code, specifically for the procedure for obtaining variances, 21.50.010. You might want to refer to my comment during the public process on the initial, the petitioner's initial request for the variance, it's on page 172 of your packet, and I just, I'm going to be basically reiterating that the petitioner is supposed to show that this is not a self-imposed hardship. The petitioner had options, last year during the period that the Cormorant Cove property was on the market, there were other properties on the market, too. We did some research, and it's on the real estate comps are in the packet on page 50 to 57. On page 50, you'll even see a property, 5,000 square feet, 10 bedrooms, that is, that was at one point, an assisted-living facility. It was not as expensive, it wasn't in the South Anchorage neighborhood, but certainly that was a choice. The petitioner chose to buy an expensive house and make extensive modifications, he just testified, he spent $175,000 on modifications, all before the approval of the variance. I propose this is a self-imposed hardship, and according to the municipal guidelines, you cannot claim, I need financial, my financial viability is now at risk because of self-imposed So I request that the appeal be granted, that it be not extended to eight and be held at five. Again, we are, we are a great neighborhood, and I want to keep it that way, I'd like to keep it in family-oriented residential neighborhood. Also in the code, it's, it specifically addresses assisted-living facilities at five people in the R1, R1A areas, with a variance to eight. So we're not talking about homes that can be for college students or a family of 20, their family, that this is assisted-living facilities, which are allowed to operate as a business because they need the support. You know, we all get that, we're not here to dispute that, we, we welcome that, we're just, would not like to see it go to 60% higher and keep it at the five-person resident level.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board or staff? Mr. Ron.
Thank you, through the chair, Ms. Kretzmar, thank you for your testimony, this might be a question combined for both you and staff. You reference the economic hardship should not be self-imposed and pointed back to the code, can I get a code citation on that and clarification as to which standard you're, you're tying that to?
21.15.01, procedure for obtaining variances, subsection C, standards, a request for variance may be initiated only by the property owner, the application must state with particularity the relief sought, and must specify the facts or circumstances that are alleged to show the application substantially meets the following standard, number one, C, the hardship is not self-imposed, and special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. And I can continue if you want.
Oh, we're good, thank you for clarification, I appreciate the, the reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through the chair, Mr. Ron, the code citation that was just referenced by the testifier is not a standard that is applied to this type of variance.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell, that's what I was after.
Can I ask, why doesn't, that was on the, the website, the municipal code website?
Ms. McConnell.
Sure, there are multiple types of variances that are allowed in code, and, and there's kind of a general variance from dimensional standards, and in that situation, the standards that are listed under section 21.15.010C, one through, I'm sorry, A through G, that you quoted from, those generally do apply to dimensional variances that come to this body. However, in this particular situation, under section 21.15.013, the standards that are applied are in 013E, and those are the standards that are referenced in the staff report.
Okay.
Any other questions from board, board or the staff? Are there any questions from the appellant? Please step to the mic and then state your name once again.
Valerie Waltrip, through the chair, to Ms. Inglis. I understand the correction that those standards aren't used, I do want to ask you about standard 21.15.013E, number five, this is one of the occupancy variance standards for administrative variance applications to increase occupancy limits, whether the proposed size of the facility is necessary for the facility's financial viability. Well, it doesn't state specifically the issue with a self-imposed financial issue, I, I would like to know if the municipality considered the fact that Mr. Demoss created a financial problem for himself by all the reasons that we stated. a financial problem for himself by all the reasons that we stated. So that's my question. Without it stating self-imposed, how does the city consider number five and how did that pass?
Previously, we responded with, in the first case, in 2114018, we indicated that, just a minute, let me double check it. We indicated that the amenities provided in the residence, in order to provide better service and the atmosphere for the residents, eight residents are required to maintain the facility's financial viability. In this case, this is the information Mr. Demoss provided. However, when the appeal was filed, additional information was provided where he provided the actual profit and loss statement that indicates there would be a loss of income if it remains at five residents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Please step to the mic, state your name, spell it, and then confirm that you've been sworn in already.
My name is Al Tamagney. A.L., first name. T.A.M.A.G.N.I. Senior. I reside at 7001 Oakwood Drive, and I have been sworn in and the president of the Abbott Loop Community Council. And you already have the information from our minutes in the packet.
Sir, so you're representing the council?
Yes, I represent the Abbott Loop Community Council. I'm the chair.
Okay. Please proceed.
Okay. And he did have a very long heating in the month of January, and we heard from both sides, and the vote was to deny the applicant for the process. So anyway, I think it raises a lot of questions, and I think a lot of those is that these people that are there, they're going to have brothers and sisters, children, grandchildren, nieces and nephews that are also going to be coming there to visit. So there's going to be more traffic than what's projected in the proposal. Those are things we also need to consider. And I think that when you take a look at things, the question I think that's very, very interesting is when the application for approval was presented to DHHS, was it a request for five or was it a request for eight? I really don't know that, but I think it's something that has to be taken a look at. I think another concern that we should take a look at is on the paragraph on page five of eight of the staff report, I believe. It says billing permits are in progress. And I believe I got something at the office, I didn't research it out or bring it down, but there was an email that I received that the conditions that were being imposed to attain a certificate of occupancy were not those of a zoning R1A. They were for R2, R3, and/or R4. So I think that staff might be able to answer those questions as to those requirements of the building department, were they for strictly R1A or were for R2s, R3s, or R4s? I think that brings up another question because in essence, if that's the case, then you're kind of doing a quasi rezone. And so I think those are things that you also have to consider. I think that, you know, that we, you know, the idea that you buy and the approvals will come is probably a very poor aspect to take a look at. One should have done perhaps a better chance or aspect of saying, what if I don't get that, can I still operate profitably? And I believe that's probably true. So I think these are things that perhaps you'd like to consider, and I think that's our, that's our input and our testimony at this time.
Thank you. Are there any questions from staff or the board?
No.
Thank you through the chair to follow up on Mr. Tamagney's testimony. Question, I guess, was directed at staff and would appreciate staff's response regarding what I see on page 208 of the staff packet. And the building permit indicates description of work. If there's any history that you could add to regarding that permit, understanding that you're not necessarily representing the entity that issued the permit, but if you have any information about a rezone, I would appreciate that.
Through the chair, the description of work on page 208 is in regard to the building code, change of use of the building from an R3 occupancy to an R4 occupancy in regard to the building code. The property has not been rezoned whatsoever. In addition, if you look at page 207, I believe Mr. Tamagney may have been mentioning the staff packet for case 2014018 when he mentioned building permits were in progress. They were in progress at that time. However, since then, a certificate of occupancy has been issued on March 19th, 2014. The permit was a request to change to an eight-person assisted living facility and was reviewed, and was reviewed by the, by the structural department, by the building department as such.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the appellant? Please state your name again.
Valerie Waldrop. Through the chair to Mr. Tamagney. Would you tell us, please, how many people attended the community council meeting and what the vote was against the variance?
Can you please step to the mic again, sir, and answer the question if possible?
I'm not sure I fully understood. It was hard to hear back there in the back room. Those speakers towards the back of the thing are all turned off. So I'd ask her to, you know, could she ask that question again? I'm sorry.
I believe the question was, how many people were present at the meeting and what was the vote?
Yes, there was about 105 people there, and we, the vote was 79 to five, 79 opposed, and one in favor. I'm sorry.
Seventy-nine opposed to granting...
Yeah, I think that's reflected, you know, in our, that's reflected, you know, in our minutes. Those who were opposed to the appeal was 79, and those in favor of it were one.
Ms. Inglis?
Mr. Chair, I think I'd like to clear that up for you. On page 204 of the packet, you will find the Abbott Loop Community Council Resolution, under resolved, there were 79 opposed to granting the variance. The date of this document, I believe, January 30th, I'm not sure of the date. It didn't come through correctly, but it was before the original appeal. This is for the original case of 2014018. So 79 were opposed in granting the variance and one was in favor of granting the variance. I'm sorry, it says January 30th, 2014, meeting.
I appreciate the clarification.
Yes, that's, yes, that's correct.
Was there any other questions from the appellant? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to provide testimony?
Mr. Chair, if I may, if we can have the appellant move closer to the front, that would be helpful in regard to timing. In addition, anybody testifying, maybe get closer to the front? That's just a suggestion.
I appreciate the suggestion. If the appellant would sit in the first row or second row? And if you would step to the mic, state your name, spell it, and then confirm that you've been sworn in already.
My name is Tim Gehrke. And I'm a resident in Sahale, and I have been, I took the oath.
Okay. Please proceed.
I just have one simple point to make, and at the Abbott Loop Community Council, I was there and voted against the granting of variance. And during the debate that we had with Mr. Demoss, one of the residences asked the question that if he was not granted the variance from five to eight, would he continue with his plans to make an assisted living facility at that residence? And his exact answer was absolutely. When I heard that, and I'm sure everyone else there, that doesn't sound like there's a financial hardship if instantly he says absolutely, he's going to continue with his plans to make it a five if it's not allowed to go to an eight facility.
Is that your testimony?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board or staff? No questions? Are there from, any questions from the appellant? No questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony? Please step to the mic, ma'am, and state your name for the record and spell it, and then confirm that you've been sworn in already.
My name is Margaret Stock. S.T.O.C.K. My first name is Margaret. I have been sworn. I live in the neighborhood. I live on Cormorant Cove Circle, a couple houses down from the Alf. I was at the community council meeting where we had the vote. The one vote in favor of the Alf was Mr. Demoss, who was present, and he gave a presentation to the large number of people who were there. I've heard inconsistent information from him, including tonight. He's said things that contradict other things he's previously said, so I'm frankly getting a little bit confused, and I hope that before you make a decision that you'll pin him down on some of the information. I'm a small business owner, and the profit and loss statement, I don't find to be particularly convincing. It's awfully vague. He was non-responsive to a number of your questions regarding the specifics on that, and I hope you'll get more information about that. There was a newspaper article in the Daily News a couple of days ago, and Mr. Demoss told the newspaper that he would continue operations even if the variance was denied. He said that he would convert the Sahale unit into a different style of operation with a family living alongside clients. So that's what he told the newspaper the other day. We have not seen any data on what Medicaid pays versus private pay. I think that would be important to get that information because tonight, for the first time, we've heard that the net result of denying the variance would be he'd have to refuse to take Medicaid, Medicare-type patients. That's the first time I've ever heard that, and I'm interested in that. I think you should read the packet that you've gotten very, very carefully because a huge number of people have taken the time to provide input to the municipality and the planning unit. Most of the information, frankly, we felt the staff just rubber stamped the variance, but I would urge you to really read what the neighbors wrote. Traffic has increased. You know, I live there, I just know that. There has not been any demonstration yet that there is a shortage of this type of housing. In fact, in the newspaper article the other day, it said that Providence Hospital, which has a very nice facility that's similar, has 11 spaces that have not been filled. And finally, I'd just like to say, this is not a good location. We have, in the notification, I know they only notified people in accordance with what the code requires, but this is a neighborhood that has one entry and egress off Abbott. It's, you know, just one road that goes in and out. And I live on Cormorant Cove Circle. I can tell you that in the wintertime, there are some times when you cannot get in and out of our street because the muni doesn't plow the street for a couple of days. So for example, this winter, we had a whole 48-hour period where we couldn't drive in and out unless you had four-wheel drive. The increased traffic from this type of facility is going to cause substantial problems for the neighborhood. I know my neighbors have already talked about this, but a facility way in the back of a dead end like that with a long entryway in and out is not, it's not, it's just not a good location for this type of care, and I frankly worry for the safety of the residents. Because if you need four-wheel drive to get in and out in the winter, and we had the incident last night where the ambulance showed up and the fire truck showed up, they're not going to be able to get in and out of there to rescue those people and get them to Providence Hospital, which is quite a, quite a far distance away.
Okay.
So I hope you'll take that into account, and please review the packet thoroughly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board or staff?
No, Mr. Chair.
No questions from the board? Any questions from the appellant? No questions from the appellant? Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify, provide testimony? Please state your name and spell it for the record and confirm that you've been sworn in.
My name's Sandra Renard. The last name is R.E.N.N.A.R.D. I arrived late with my four kiddos, so I was not sworn in. I was a military officer, if that counts, but I'll swear in now if you want to do that.
Yes. Please, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give is the truth?
I do.
Okay. Please proceed.
Sure. I just wanted to speak on three points. The residential quality of the neighborhood, I know that's been addressed. I think in particular, there was a question raised about, you know, did we compare or do any traffic studies on how much we normally come or go? We, you know, I wasn't involved in that, but I can speak to a large majority of the families in that neighborhood. A large majority go to Trailside Elementary. I do work full-time, but I work from my home. My husband commutes via bicycle most days. I go to Fred Meyer's about once a week, Costco once a week. My kids walk to and from school. So I know some people may, 10 times, if they go work out, come this and that. It's not really what you see in Sahale. You see a lot of families like ours, a lot of people commuting by bicycle, a lot of people walking to and from school. So I just wanted to share that. Also, I think they talked about, you know, comparing maybe to larger families or a number of groups, you know, number of adults in a home. I have a large family. I have four kids, so when I take them to the doctors or dentist or annual physicals, I do it all at once, you know? I'm that horrific mom who comes in with all four kids and just knocks it out at once. But I think it's very different when you're dealing with eight adults. Very, very close to my own grandparents, I went through all of their final days with them and just know what it, what it took, you know? And it was a lot of back and forths, a lot of hospital visits, a lot of extra care, and they all, you know, used hospice as well. So very strong residential neighborhood. My kids would be probably the first to deliver cookies or trick-or-treat there. I think five adults, elderly are more than welcome. I do have concern on traffic with it going to eight. My only other two points, I would just say I was a little disheartened to see just such a loud voicing of, of people coming forward against the variance. When I heard that the variance was granted, you know, after seeing those strong numbers and just all the, all the people who really rallied there, I was just kind of felt like, wow, were we not heard at all? I mean, I was just kind of floored by that, so I just wanted to state that. And last but not least is really the PNL and the hardship numbers. You know, I work for a business and do intercompany transfers and things like that all the time, so it just, it looks odd to me, and I would, again, reiterate what other people have said as taking a closer look at that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board or staff? No questions? Any questions from the appellant? No questions? Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony? Please step to the mic, sir, state your name, and spell it for the record, and then confirm that you've been sworn in.
My name is John Power. P.O.W.E.R. J.O.H.N. is my first name. I've, I'm a resident of the Sahale neighborhood. I live across the street.
Have you been sworn in, sir?
I have been sworn in, sorry. I followed this issue very closely from the beginning of the issue up to today. I believe that there has been a great deal of misinformation and conflicting information that has been presented. Based on the information... Based on the information that I have seen and followed, and I have read through these packets as closely, I believe, as anyone, I don't believe that the information is consistent, and I believe that the variance should not have been granted because I do believe there's a great deal of conflicting information here. My most, or my greatest concern is about the public safety aspects of this. I do believe that a larger facility, housing eight people as opposed to five, will certainly increase the amount of traffic in this residential neighborhood. I believe it will negatively impact the residential character. I believe the real thing here, though, is the safety of people, pedestrians, particularly schoolchildren, who traverse these streets, particularly in wintertime when snow removal by the municipality is sporadic. This is not only the 18 children who live on this particular street, but many, many children have to cross the roads that people would use for access and egress to this facility from a number of other neighborhoods, accessing Service High School, Trailside Elementary, and to and from the bus stop that services Handshoe Middle School. So I would encourage us to think very hard about this, and I would like to see the move from five to eight be denied. I'd also like to say that I look very much forward to welcoming the five residents that I believe should occupy this facility to my neighborhood, as well as the workers and so on, who will be coming and going. I believe we are a welcoming neighborhood, and I look forward to meeting my new neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board or staff?
No, sir. No questions.
No questions from the board? Any questions from the appellant? No questions from the appellant? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony? Please step to the mic, ma'am. Please state your name, spell it, and...
I haven't been sworn in.
Okay. Can you state your name and spell it, please, ma'am?
Okay. My name is Madeline Warren, and I live, I live on Comerant. And what else did you say?
Can you spell your first and last name, please?
Okay. Madeline, M-A-D-E-L-I-N-E. And the last name is Warren, W-A-R-R-E-N.
Okay. And can you please raise your right hand, ma'am?
Yeah.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give is the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
I'm the old person on Comerant, and we are not opposed to old people. I'm 78, and we welcome the five, but I am very much opposed to the eight. I'm a former teacher. I think our children are the future of our country, or of our state. I'm not against the old people, but I think we should give these kids a chance. And the kids deserve a chance because they all walk to school. I've seen the snow on the roads. I've seen the snow piled up in Comerant. And it's impossible for the kids to walk unless they walk in the road sometimes. So I would ask that you please consider all of these people from Sahali who have testified. They are right on everything that they have said. So please consider it, denying the eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board or staff?
No, Mr. Chair.
No questions? Any questions from the appellant? No questions? Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony? Not seeing any hands for further testimony? So staff has 1 minute and 31 seconds for rebuttal?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to point out again that the Traffic Department did not provide an adverse comment in regard to this case. They didn't indicate that the number of trips for this would adversely affect the community. In addition, the homeowner is addressing safety concerns through a policy and procedure outlined that he provided in the packet. The property also has a sprinkler system and a fire alarm that will also help the occupants in the event that there is a fire. Children in various neighborhoods across the city do walk to school on a daily basis. Some have sidewalks, some don't have sidewalks. Some communities have a problem when we have a big snowfall. And, you know, it's just the nature of living in Alaska. Sometimes there's going to be a lot of snow on the ground that needs to be removed, and the city does not ultimately get out there right away. So at this point, we believe that you should affirm the director's decision and deny the appeal. Thank you.
Okay, and for the record, the appellant did not have any time left for rebuttal. So that is the close of the public hearing, and the matter now rests with the board.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I had plugged in before. I meant to say one more thing, if I may.
My apologies, go ahead.
In addition, in the code, there are no limits on the number of adults living in a home if it were just a regular neighborhood or a neighborhood house. There's not a limit on the number of people and the number of cars in a regular residential home. So I just wanted to add that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so that now closes public testimony, and the matter now rests with the board. So is there a positive motion for case 2014-0058? Mr. Ron has moved, Mr. Vig has seconded. Mr. Ron, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I may need some assistance since this will be my first positive motion for an appeals case. Stating my motion, I move that the Board, zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals in case 2014-0058, move to grant an appeal of the approval of a reasonable accommodation variance for a small residential care facility to allow for an eight-person assisted living facility at the property located at 8431 Comerant Cove Circle. And stop.
Okay. And seconded by Mr. Vig?
I second Mr. Ron's motion, Mr. Chairman.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Look forward to the opportunity to open up for further discussion amongst the board, the set of standards we have to evaluate, and the evidence that we've heard presented today. Starting with standard A, I concur with staff and their response regarding the elements of that standard. I would like to continue to note for the record, the applicant did apply for building permits and did follow the procedure as laid out per code. Regarding standard B, I also concur that the application is not applicable to setback requirements. The structure isn't conforming location and does not require a dimensional variance. Regarding standard C, I concur with staff that sufficiency of notice was adequate, extending out to 800 feet from the property boundary, reaching 53 parcels. Regarding standard D, again, I concur with staff that the request for reasonable accommodation was made in a timely manner. Regarding standard E, and its apparent nine elements, I agree in part with department's findings, but I do not concur in total. For the record, I'll try and walk through each one of the nine sub-elements quickly. I concur with staff's response regarding sub-element one in that the outside of the property is not being proposed for change, therein meeting litmus for a request for reasonable accommodation. Sub-standard, or excuse me, element two of standard E, for administrative variance applications to increase occupancy limits, economic hardship on the intended occupants if the variance is denied. For this element, I've struggled with a bit, but would like to focus on the key phrase to me, economic hardship on the intended occupants. We did hear some testimony from Mr. Demas that change in business operations would result from approval of the appeal in that a segment of his potential clients would be excluded. Therein, I concur with staff that there is potential for economic hardship on those intended occupants. But weighing that against public testimony we heard regarding the availability of other beds, or excuse me, other facility spaces and anchorage, I may not have all the information I'd like in hand to be fully confident in that concurrence. Regarding element three, accident prevention and safety measures, we did hear a lot of testimony this evening about concern regarding a jump from five to eight occupants at that facility and its potential escalation of traffic-related issues. Taking into consideration the facility's policies within the staff packet, concur with staff's findings that the provider has made efforts to implement accident prevention and safety measures. Regarding standard E, sub-element four, whether the accommodation requested is advancing housing opportunities for disabled individuals in a residential community without jeopardizing residential aspects. Again, this is an element that I'm struggling with. Clearly, we've heard a lot of description from residents who will be directly affected by the outcome of this case. And we've heard a lot of testimony about what the character of the community means to those residents. And did hear what I think was significant testimony to the effect that there could be jeopardy associated with enjoyment of the neighborhood as directly related to the commercial aspects of the operation. So I'm struggling with that element, but think that I don't concur with staff's findings there. Sub-element five, for administrative variance applications to increase occupancy limits, whether the proposed size of the facility is necessary for the facility's financial viability. I do not concur with staff's findings or response on this sub-element. There was a lot of discussion about the profit and loss statement, and I don't feel that adequate evidence was presented by the original applicant or pursued by staff to weigh in the favor of that element. Regarding sub-element number six, projected contribution to traffic volumes, again, we did hear testimony to that effect. I appreciate the appellant and the appellant's support's efforts to make a quantified effort to look at traffic volumes, understanding that that can be a difficult task. I think what weighs in my mind on this element is the location of the facility with respect to primary thoroughfares. It's at the end of a fairly lengthy residential street with only one ingress and egress. So the increase to traffic volumes, if by number appearing small, given the context and character of the street, I think that the way that that impact is felt is worth noting. Regarding sub-element seven, eight, and nine, I agree with staff's findings. And the list continues. Standard F, approving a variance, the Planning Department may impose reasonable conditions. I agree with staff regarding incorporation of community development department's recommendations there, so I concur. Given the challenges I've stated with the sub-elements five, six, and four, I do not intend to support my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ron.
Excuse me, excuse me. I've become confused as well. Given the findings as stated, I intend to support my positive motion to grant an appeal in this case.
Yes. Mr. Vig, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I concur with many of Mr. Ron's statements, and I'm going to focus my comments primarily on section E. And relying on the language that states that the Planning Department shall review these factors in deciding to approve or deny an application. And, you know, when we hear variance requests for other matters, it's a pretty high bar typically is the way I view it. And the applicant has to demonstrate that the standards in those other cases are met. And I'm going back to assessing the standards here listed, and I, as I review them, I question whether I would have viewed them to be met had we been hearing this case as an application. So with regard to standard number one, you know, it considers factors such as traffic patterns, on-street parking, and so on. And again, I go back to the applicant's, in my opinion, burden of proof to provide the backup data so that the Planning Department has something to rely on in assessing whether that standard is met. So I don't think we have the information there to be able to say that it was. Standard number two, which is on page six, for administrative variance to increase occupancy limits, economic hardship on the intended occupants, if the variance is denied, has to be demonstrated. And, you know, I don't really see, you know, other than anecdotally, that there's a belief that housing is in short supply. We, I think most people believe that to be true, but for this particular demographic, I don't, I don't know. I don't have any information that describes the available housing stock and assisted living stock and what the demand is. And so I don't see the information presented by the applicant or by the Planning Department staff that supports that decision. I'm going to skip standard three and four. And really, I'm focusing on the economic part of it, and I'm going to go ahead and look at number five. And I don't, I don't think there's been enough evidence presented that demonstrates that the five-person facility is financially unfeasible. And it has been in operation for a month or two. So we have no, no tax information or no profit and loss by a CPA to look at or anything like that, or reasonable rent determinations with a related party transaction. I'm confused, concerned about that. I don't know that that's how reasonable that is. So I don't believe that the business plan that was created for the five-bed facility whether it's flawed or not, or whether it's flawed, does not, in my mind, create the need to expand the facility to eight. So I don't think that standard is met. We've heard a lot of talk about traffic and safety and other things like that. And, you know, I think the neighborhood facilities are well-constructed and in good order, and I don't have any reason to think that they in themselves present any hazard. But I go back to the original comment I made that some traffic and parking analysis would be appropriate for the applicant to present so that those parts of it could be supported. And so I have enough evidence in my mind that the, in my opinion, the variance should not have been granted on the evidence that was presented that I have to look at. And so I intend to support the motion to grant the appeal.
Thank you. Ms. McKay. Can you?
Sorry. I concur with the comments of both Mr. Ron and Mr. Vig. And the big sticking point for me was no surprise that number E, is it? Yeah, E5 for the for the viability of the facility. The fact that it states on page 8 that recently the applicant submitted a profit-loss statement. So evidently, that was not part of the original decision. It's kind of an after-the-fact thing. And on the one hand, Mr. Demas says that the three additional would be easily filled. But then when discussing the rate, he said that, he talked about vacancy rates. So that was kind of inconsistency there. The characteristic, number 6, external characteristics and impacts of the proposed facility. New subdivisions are required to have two ingress-egress points. And this is an older subdivision that only has one, and that does cause concern for me. And I too will be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Dill.
Mr. Chair, I agree with the comments. I agree with most of the comments made by my colleagues. I did want to first comment on the scope of review that we're doing here. And I was looking at the handout that had the section. And it looked to me like we're not making our decision based on whether the municipality's decision was adequate based on what they had in front of it. But it says here that the board shall conduct a full, this is 21.12.420. It's in the little memo handout that's only two pages that we got. Anyway, it says 21.12.420 says, "In scope of review and hearing appeals from enforcement orders and administrative decisions, the board shall conduct a full evidentiary hearing and base its decision on the applicable provisions of the municipal code, the evidence and the argument presented." So I think it is fair to consider the profit and loss statement before us, even though when the initial decision was made, that they did not have that in front of them. Having said that, I was I agree with other comments that there's not really enough there to show that that the eight is required for this project to be financially viable. And I was troubled by kind of what seemed like changes or inconsistency in statements made about what would happen if if the applicant is, or if if the limit is five, a five-person assisted living facility. Sorry. I will just address a few of the provisions of E because I agreed with the comments of Mr. Ron on A, B, C, D, F, G. And I don't believe that every single factor has to be demonstrated or proven. I think that in that prefatory language, it just says that these factors need, that what needs to be considered are the factors relevant to the request, which include the items set forth as related to the request. So, you know, it could be possible to base a decision based on, you know, to determine that certain factors outweigh other factors or that in light of the evidence presented. I was for factor one or, sorry, for factor, I'm just I I do believe that for number four, that this, that allowing eight would be advancing housing opportunities. And I don't, I I understand the concerns of the residents. And I, some of them clearly believe that residential aspects of their neighborhood would be jeopardized. But I find it hard to believe that an additional three residents in the assisted living facility would would change the character of the neighborhood that much. So, but when I look at you know, when I look at factor five in terms of anything that, whether the proposed increase is necessary for the facility, or whether the proposed size of the facility, meaning eight people, is necessary for the facility's financial viability, I did not find that it was necessary based on what we had in front of us, including the profit and loss. And I I think I'll just leave it at that and invite further discussion if there is any.
Thank you. I'll speak to myself. I'm in agreement with Mr. Ron with regards to everything he stated except for item Echo 9. And I guess I have a question for clarification from staff as it relates to that. Echo 9 states, "Other factors deemed relevant to the applicant or the planning department review of the application." And my question is, is the overwhelmingly negative comments related to the approval of the variance not taken into consideration in relation to Echo 9? Personally, I see that as a relevant item. So I guess I'm just asking for clarification on that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Understanding that staff may have a position on it, I think it's under the board's purview to, if we don't concur with staff's finding regarding Echo 9, for us to bring that into discussion. And I think you raise a valid question. So I'm curious as to what your position is. Would you request that we as a board further evaluate that item? Or are you just stating that you don't concur with staff's position on the matter?
Yes. In essence, I don't agree that there are no other factors that are deemed relevant as it relates to Echo 9. I think the overwhelming negative comments from the entire community, except for one who's the individual that got the variance, is incredibly relevant when it relates to something like this. If this business can be operated with five, which it is appearing at face value since it has been for the last several weeks, that it can, and from some of the testimony provided by the individual who received the variance, I think that's incredibly relevant and I think should be taken into consideration. So, given that, I do intend to support the motion.
Ms. McConnell.
Mr. Chair, if I could just briefly respond to your question. Staff was focused on guidance from the Department of Justice and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development on the, what is considered reasonable accommodation. And we did include the guidance regarding that on page 9 of the packet. And while I do take your point about the public input and can see that that is definitely a factor, this was something, the reasonable accommodation considerations weighed heavily with the staff. Thank you.
Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Follow-up comment to the board. I asked a question during public testimony about the value of a facility like this and what it can bring to a neighborhood. I appreciate the appellant's clarification in the position that the question isn't a value for the facility, but respective to the jump from five to eight. And in closing, I appreciate all of the engagement that we saw tonight. I think that an engaged community is a healthy community. That said, you know, we appear to be moving towards a direction on this appeal request, which is irrespective of the fact that the facility is now intertwined with that neighborhood. So looking at this as an opportunity to continue the health of our communities. I think what we saw here tonight was good and productive, and I appreciate the participation.
Any other comments? Ms. McKay.
I just wondered if we wanted to, we briefly discussed it earlier about adding the traffic department's condition. And I was in the process of trying to find the traffic department's request for
Said on page 66.
For the accessible accommodation. So I suppose what I should do is propose it as an amendment. Sounds like what I should do. Okay. I move that we add as a condition. Does that work? That doesn't work. If we approve the appeal? Can we add a condition? No? Okay. Never mind that.
Okay, so we're still on the main motion. Mr. Ron.
Could we get some input from staff? I would be open to the amendment if it's within our purview to do so.
Through the chair, Mr. Ron, Ms. McKay. If the appeal is approved, that means the variance for increasing the occupancy is denied, meaning that the petitioner is allowed a byright use of five occupants in which the municipality would not be conditioning that. So it would be inappropriate to add a condition.
All right.
Thank you for the clarification. Ms. Dill, do you have comments?
No, they've been addressed already.
Thank you. So we're still on the main motion? So if there's no further discussion, please vote on the motion.
Can we read the motion one last time before we
So the motion is to approve the appeal to the variance. So a vote yes would approve that appeal. So the vote is five yays, zero nays. Thank you to the public for your testimony. So back to the agenda. Item I, are there any reports from the board? See, no reports. We'll move to item J. Are there any other comments from the board? Mr. Ron.
Just through the chair, I'd like to extend my appreciation to staff in this case. Ms. Inglis, Ms. McConnell, thank you for the information that you did prepare and evaluate for the board. I think the questions you asked added a lot of value to the discussion.
Can we remain quiet, please? We're still in session.
My position wasn't certain until quite late in the evening. But again, I do thank you for your role in tonight's events. Thanks.
I do as well. I do also.
I'd like to thank everyone, staff as well, for items that they have prepared. But more importantly, for your patience with me going through this matter. So thanks to everyone, both the public and the board. Any other comments?
Do we have an agenda for next month? Do we know what cases might be ahead of us?
Mr. Chair, my recollection is, and I'll have to double-check back in the office, but I don't think any cases have been submitted for next month. So it appears you may get to skip a meeting. But we'll confirm that.
Excuse me, though, we had that postponement of the variance. Oh, is that going to next month? So if you would
I guess that'll go, so that, yeah, that would
Your staff report for that case, please.
So a motion to adjourn? Moved by Ms. McKay, seconded by Ms. Dill. Thank you. We are now adjourned at 9:22 PM.